Good. Ladies and gentlemen, I call the City Council Committee of the whole meeting to order for Wednesday, August 5th. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Condon, please will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Brian, if you'd be kind enough to please call the roll.
Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee. Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
She is here. She says there's no sound, but she's, I'm seeing her on the chat.
Jobin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ted, present, Your Honor, and I'll figure out the volume.
Roger. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the whole. I'd like to welcome you to, and all those in attendance and those viewing on our computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and Quad Cityans throughout the region. Happy you're participating in our city government and ask that your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all, a safe, stable, and welcoming community. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, I'd ask you to put it on silent or turn it off, please, as they can interfere with what we're doing. If you wish to address the council, please come to the podium, state your name, ward, or address, and address the council as a whole and not to any one individual. You'll have the opportunity to address the council during public with business at the end or on any item that shows up on our agenda. When are you addressing the council? Again, please step to the podium, state your name, ward, or address. During public hearings, you have as long as you want. The rest of the time, please limit your time to five minutes. We'll be respectful of you. We ask you to please be respectful of us. Thank you. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, is there any updates?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have three public hearings this evening, two in Public Works and one in Finance. So I'll ask our Public Works leader, Alderman Dunn, to conduct those public hearings.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two public hearings this evening from Public Works. I opened the first public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the City Hall security improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
That's it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification and form of contract and estimated cost for the River Center South Roof Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next one is under Finance. Alderman Condon will lead that public hearing. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing regarding the adoption with amendments of the International Code Council's 2015 International Fire Code as Chapter 15.32 of the Davenport Municipal Code. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? This closes the public hearing. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Sorry. Thank you, Alderman Condon. Now we have some petitions and communications. I'll give some updates now for me. First, as I said yesterday, but I'll say it again today, would give some feedback for some of the issues we've been talking about. Under the recruiting side, we have two HR personnel who now have been assigned to handle recruiting for all our city departments. Scott Van de Woesting is going to focus on the public safety side, fire and police, and Courtney Jones will handle the other departments, and Mallory Merritt is the director, and Ms. Spiegel will assist. But we've assigned two people to go out, conduct workshops, orientation sessions, et cetera, in the community, like at Lincoln School, et cetera, to work with, solicit, and bring in more diverse people as best as we can into our community. So my ask of everyone that's listening or paying attention to this is if you could find folks, please, and mentor them. We call it the Army Sponsorship. Sponsor them and bring them to the workshops, the orientation centers, the testing sites, and guide them, support them, sponsor them through the process, and we'll try and do our part to get the information out when these things happen and get names and contacts so we can keep them informed of important dates, et cetera. So we're going to call this an enhanced communication strategy for recruiting, and I thank very much Ms. Spiegel, Ms. Merritt, and the HR Department to assist, and of course, all my colleagues up here to help with that. But again, my ask is, it's a partnership, so please help us with that. The police recruiting is starting as we speak, and the fire department recruiting will start October. So, and then, of course, all the other departments. So, thank you for that. And then, reference in training, again, Scott Van Woesting in HR, in HR Department overseeing, is working with the Police Department and Chief Sikorski. We do an annual training on implicit bias and cultural awareness. We're going to at least increase that to twice a year. In particular issues, we'll increase it even more. So we have committed and heard from you recruiting, we've heard from you training, and we're going to increase that and focus on those areas. And then, there's been a call for a hate ordinance. We did a hate resolution months ago. Tom Warder, to his credit, and myself and Ms. Spiegel, we researched with the state. There's a state ordinance references, and it talks about trespassing and some other things. So we're just going to do a deep dive on that and work with the Police Department so we follow the state ordinance and know what it entangles or involves, and make sure we follow that. And then, an update to one of the items later, but just so everybody's aware, on the school resource officer discussion, I won't go into too much, but we have developed a work group, working group, task force, whatever you want to call it. I've asked Ms. Spiegel. Alderman Condon has been gracious enough to accept, and of course, Chief Sikorski as the subject matter expert, and then from the school district, Dr. Kowalski, School Board President Potts, and then another school member of their choosing, will get together and do a drill down and work on a memorandum of instruction on how the SRO program we managed, worked, and dealt with, both in the city side and the school side, so we all have an understanding of exactly how we're going to do that, assuming the council's cool with extending. So, I just wanted to give you those updates. And then, another update I wanted to give you, you might have seen, but Davenport, the Quad City side of Iowa, I think should be pretty proud that in 2019, we've been recognized as the top region for economic growth. All right? The leading metropolitan locations report ranked the Quad Cities seven out of 85 metropolitan Midwest areas for economic growth. This Quad Cities, Davenport area, top in Iowa. Livability was ranked third diversified economy in the United States, likely to come out of the pandemic quicker than other places. So, pretty big deal. A couple of years ago, Davenport is recognized as the top small business community in Iowa. Now we're recognized from the Quad City side in Iowa as the top place for economic growth. So, I just wanted to pass those on, and now I see my colleagues, Alderman Jobin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, this upcoming Tuesday, August 11th, at 6:30 PM, Duck Creek Park Lodge will be hosting a sixth ward meeting. Anyone willing to come and attend? You are asked to come. We will have Sergeant Harris come and speak, talking about Good Neighbor Project and ways in which we can be good neighbors and address some crime issues. I ask anybody in attendance, please bring a mask, so if we cannot properly space, since we're inside, to don your mask. I want to thank Samantha Torres for getting information out. Also, thank to Corey Smith from IT, as he's going to be setting up web links so we can have a GoTo meeting, so those that do not or cannot attend in person can jump on online. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobin. Alderman Woman, McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, I want to let everybody know that the, my ward meeting for next Monday would have been virtual, and that has been canceled for August. We are not having good virtual attendance. So I will be doing a, my next ward meeting will be in September. It'll be Saturday, September 12th. It'll be here in council chambers, and we will try to have a link as well for people who want to phone in. People in Third Ward don't appear to like to phone in very much, so hopefully they'll be here in person, and we can social distance here. I will be asking people to wear masks for that as well. So, and I'll have more information about that later, but we will not be meeting in August. I'm always available. Wanted to share a little bit about the census tonight. We did get some, a little bit disturbing news this week. The census will be ending on September 30th. That's a full month ahead of where we had been told the adjusted schedule would be. Enumerators, the people going out and knocking on the doors of people who haven't responded, would have had three months under the old schedule. They have less than two months to do this work. So, you know, your Davenport Complete Count Committee has been working very hard for months on this. When COVID hit, we did not say, well, we'll wait till it's over. We kind of jumped in. We have been distributing door hangers and goodies into lots of different groups and through lots of different organizations. I am concerned that we will not have everybody be counted, and it will be very difficult for our hard-to-reach populations especially. You know, this is a shout out to anybody who represents a group, a group of people, a congregation, they have not been able to meet. There's been very little outreach through our churches because they've been unable to meet in person, and that's not going to happen probably before September 30th. So, any cultural organizations, any groups representing populations, if you need flyers, if you need goodies to hand out, if you have a way of doing a phone out to your members to make sure they've done their census, please do that. We must be counted, and we are not counted right now. We've worked really hard. We've had a lot of people respond, but we are not where we need to be, and neither is probably any city in America, and we're not the only ones in this boat. Everybody is. So let me just do a quick recap of where we are, and I didn't, we didn't report last week because we weren't in council, and so we have, if you look up at the screen, we had, this is two weeks of reporting, and typical growth is less than 0.1% per week. So there was a big jump overall in the U.S. of 0.7. That's huge for two weeks. Iowa had 0.5. Scott County, and Iowa, by the way, is now tied for third place with two other states. So Scott County had a 0.4% increase, and Davenport had a 0.4% increase. We are now at 66.7% self-reporting, and this is what we're measuring, because that's all we have to measure. The final in 2010 was 71%. So we are still not there, but we're getting close. We had some nice gains in some of our low responding census tracks. 114 had a 0.4% increase, 106 a 0.2, 107 a 0.3, and that was on top of a 0.5, the, in the last week that we measured, and then 109, a 0.6 increase, percent increase. So that's, that's great news. But I'm starting to track, and I passed out two, and I can make this available to others if you're interested. I just went through today and looked at all the census tracks in the city and pulled the numbers, and so what I'm looking at really now, we're looking at, Your Honor, is self-response rates. Where were we in 2010? Where are we in 2020? And so, I've, the ones that are green have exceeded their 2010 self-response rates by a little bit, in some cases by more, and that's great. The red, the ones in red are 5% or more below 2010, so they may have, some of these census tracks have response rates that are like 13% lower than in 2010, so that's not good. And then the ones that are still black there are ones that are within 5%. Some are, you know, 1% less, some are 2% less, and so they're pacing pretty well. So the ones, of course, we continue to be concerned about are the ones that show up in red, and I've got the numbers over to the right, which is impossible to read on the screen. In any case, these are areas we continue to need to focus. I would ask Alderman, if there's anything you want to do to try to reach some of these areas, talk to me. We still have things to hand out. We are working in August with back-to-school drives. We're working with our students. We're also working with LULAC. They're doing a special push. We have signs that will be going up, bilingual signs. So we're hoping to try to maximize these next few weeks. We really have to push it. If you know people who haven't done their census, please help them. If you don't know how to help them, call me. 563-594-0628, and we will get your census done. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis, and as always, thanks for your leadership and great interest in helping us be squared away. So I'm going to pause here. Corey Wright, we're going to all, he's going to work the system and call back in, so we're just pausing here before I go to the next person to make sure Maria and everybody else is tracking here.
Hi there. This is a call from GoTo. To join your meeting, press pound or hang up. This conference will now be recorded.
Give you a thumbs up? Roger that. Okay. Next one, let's see. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got to say every time I get the opportunity to speak, if Marion is before me, I'm just going to have to just say it. I greatly appreciate her leadership when it comes to the U.S. Census, and I was deeply disturbed by shortening the time suspense for enumerators. It seems though, I don't know what was the reason or rationale for the shortening of the length of the U.S. Census, but as anybody who studies this thing such as I do, you know, at the last end, it's those underrepresented populations that go miscounted. But, you know, I just wish that, you know, whoever those numerators are in this last push for the U.S. Census, they get an accurate count, because those are federal dollars that come back to the city, go to the school district. So if you, you know, if we can do our due diligence and help out with the U.S. Census, that'd be greatly appreciated. Road and traffic. The, I am more than happy, more than overwhelmed with all the work projects that's going on, particularly in my ward, throughout the city of Davenport. Sometimes this is a gift and a curse. People complain about it, but it shows that we are doing exactly what the population, the citizens want us to do when it comes to the water, work, road work and rail traffic. However, you know, coal, I just wish that there would be better signage to guide people through the various traffic barriers, because it still is a hindrance, and I get a lot of texts in or emails about the signage and where, how the detours are set up, so I wish we can do a better job of that. Far as my ward meeting, I had to postpone another session, my ward meeting. I'm still going to try to figure this thing out, but I promise you, I will have a ward meeting pretty soon. It was brought to my attention that there's been flyers going around about hate flyers, and I think the mayor alluded to it, that there is a state ordinance that addresses hate, but I quite sure my brothers and sisters that sit to my left and right, you can always add to, but you can't take away. The city can do our own thing as well, so I will have conversations with my brothers that sit to my left, brothers and sisters that sit to my left about doing something at the city level as well. Gun violence. So there was a shooting the other day. I know Alderman Ambrose always talks about gun violence. I cannot express to the members how I feel about gun violence, particularly when it hit close to home. Davenport does have an issue when it comes to gun violence. I think we receive as city council members a handout about, you know, where the gun violence occurs throughout the city. And I would tell you, one is too many. One is too many. The last one that really shook me up pretty bad was when a father was paying respects to his son. His eight-year-old son had died of cancer, and the father got shot in the funeral home. This is, the first thing I said, I said, this is Davenport. That's what I said. This is Davenport. Not, I'm from, I'm telling myself, I'm born and raised South Side of Chicago, and I said, this is not Chicago. This cannot happen here. We have to do our best to set the example, to really get at the root cause, because so many people are going to say, just lock them up. They no good. I hear it all the time. I know. But there's something that's going on that we can't put our finger on. But I, as I sit here, I guarantee you that I'm going to be very active to really, and work with the Police Department and Chief and whoever would like to assist. We really got to get out there with gun violence, because I do not want somebody in my ward, somebody in the city of Davenport, not to feel safe because there's an uptick in gun violence. When I was campaigning, I, I'm not joking with you, it was a lady. I knocked on her door. I said, my name is Pat Peacock, I'm running for Alderman's seventh ward, and we literally sat on her front porch for 30 minutes. 30 minutes, because she was just telling me how afraid she is. You know, somebody had just recently broke into her home. It wasn't gun violence, but somebody had just recently broke into her home. We have to do much better. I swear to you, if I'm your Alderman in the seventh ward or throughout the city, we just got to do a better job of protecting our citizens. The Civil Rights Commission had a forum on Saturday. I attended via Zoom, and I'm very happy, well, happy that the forum existed, and I took notes. I would be remiss to say Davenport has its issues. Yes, we have issues, but I'm quite sure the members that sit to my left and right, we don't work hard to address those issues. But I will provide some pushback. Just because you talked to LULAC, just because you talked to NAACP, people of color are not monolithic. You have to talk to individuals. So we have to get out there. Once again, we need to, as a city council, as leadership, we need to, we need to tell my narrative that we out there, we are really getting about doing, doing our job, about doing leadership and running this great city we call Davenport. If I'm not mistaken, the Civil Rights Commission called for that meeting. I was, as I received so many Facebook messages, and I saw a post that really disturbed me as a leader of this great city to single out a member of this, of this staff personally. I don't know if my brothers and sisters to my right and left are going to call this out, but they should. I'm waiting for their response, but someone, you get called out personally, as the mayor always do before a city council meeting, then we have a problem. We have a big problem. Once again, the Civil Rights Commission called for that meeting. And to call somebody out personally that told, that tells me we are very divisive, divisive in this city, we have a huge problem. I noticed a name calling. We have to do better as leaders. I don't know if there's some type of smear campaign against the staff member, but it has to stop, and I know what it feels like personally, because as I've been outspoken on many issues, I receive the same treatment personally. I've been made aware that there's a smear campaign against me, trying to dig up information of my background. If you want to know about me, I'm born and raised South Side of Chicago. I retired from the Army of 20 years. I decided to stay here in Davenport, or decided to become an Alderman. I decided to fight for seventh ward. I decided to fight for the city of Davenport, and that's all you need to know. I'm done.
Thank you, Alderman Peacock. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. Will said, Alderman Peacock, you know, we started the meeting with the mayor saying Davenport's the most diversified city in the country, and I believe it. I want to thank the mayor and the city administrator for opening up City Hall and allowing people to come down and hear the presentation from the Civil Rights Commission. Good job by Alderman Peacock. Talks about the gun violence. Three months ago, the mayor had a call for action because of the alarming increase of gun violence in our great city. You know, I live with, I live it every day, Alderman Peacock, every day. Every day I hear from people that have been victimized by the criminals in our community. Yeah, you want to point some fingers? Point fingers at the court system, the judges, the State Attorney General, that these habitual criminal felons continue to be dumped back in our community and terrorize our great neighborhoods. You know, we talked about the map. Yeah, I see the map. I live the map every day, so until we reach out to the leaders in Des Moines and ask them to partner with the Davenport Police Department and show us how we can remove these criminals that terrorize our great neighborhood, you know, it's unfair to our Police Department, and it's unfair to the victims, and it's unfair to the taxpayers. Their action or lack of action turns every taxpayer in the city of Davenport into victims. So, once again, I reach out to the mayor and the city administrator to get a hold of the governor, get a hold of the State Attorney General, and the Chief Justice of the State Supreme Court, and ask them if they want to be our allies and partner with us to make our great city the safest city in the country. Right now, there's parts of our community that struggle, and my neighborhood, my ward, I'm really sick of it, and I've been talking about it for 23 years. When I was elected, I was elected on the crime issue, and I have to listen to people that come down to the city council and say, oh, we got to defund the Police Department, or I say, I think we should militarize our Police Department, because there's parts of our great city that were at war. Militarize, okay? Terrorism. I'd want to order, Your Honor, the people in the back, hey.
Please, please, folks, you'll have time to talk. You'll have time to talk, please.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? Sir, please. Ms. Lee.
Mr. Mayor.
I got it.
First of all, I'm changing my ward meetings to the second Thursday, and again, they will all be virtual because I want to make sure that everyone is protected, and I've been fortunate that people are willing to call in, so far, anyway. So I just wanted to announce that I'm changing it to the second Thursday of every month, because it competed with too many holidays on the first Monday. The next thing I'd like to talk about is I'm very grateful that we're talking about these things. I'm pleased that we are working on more diversity with hiring and training, but I really need to emphasize how important it is that we can hire and we can train, but we have to provide a welcoming opportunity, career paths, support. I have been the other. I dared, when I was 22, to enter a man's field. I'm a wildlife biologist at a time when women just did not do that, other than perhaps Jane Goodall and Diane Fossey. I was told straight out, no, we don't hire women. I was also, when I was hired, I was, the work environment was extremely difficult. It was everything from sexual harassment, discrimination, sexual assault, being told being told straight out, we don't want you here, but I know you got hired because you're a woman. So it's very important, not just for this city, not just to focus on the hiring and the training, but you also have to create, when you do this, an atmosphere that allows career paths and retention, where people want to not only get hired, but stay. And that is actually the harder work than it is the hiring and the training. It's creating a welcoming atmosphere for everyone that we hire. So I really want to encourage the mayor and, um, the Cory and, uh, the human resources to not only look at the smaller box, but you have to look at the entire situation. I stood it out, but I, um, the discrimination stopped against me. I had to start my own business. And how that was a wonderful opportunity, but it's also very costly. I don't have the pensions that other people have. I don't have the retirements. I didn't have the benefits because you end up paying for it all when you start your own business. So I just want to encourage that. The next thing that's really important, I am very grateful for, um, my colleagues for being willing to vote, to move up the, um, the vote for the light at Eastern and Veterans Memorial Parkway. I am really sorry about the, um, problem we, the problem, the tragedy that occurred with the accident there. Uh, so I would, I am grateful to the council. And I would also like, um, Ms. Gleason to come up and tell us when the light will actually go in. Because I'm getting a lot of calls and emails on this, and rightfully so.
I'm called Gleason, Public Works. Um, primarily what we're waiting on right now is, is immediately once council approved, um, that, two, three weeks ago, I'm a little off. We did contact our contractor as well as Mid-American Energy to get that work scheduled. So it is, um, we are expediting it as quickly as we can. As soon as Mid-American can get the, um, the power box and things in there, we will get it installed, and we're hoping it'll be the third week of August at the latest.
And can I ask a question? When you knew that this was going to be one of the two primary detours for the fifty-third construction, why was this not started earlier so that it would be in place when the detours went into place?
So as soon as, whenever we have a change in traffic pattern, we do traffic counts to make sure we're staying within, um, the MUTCD. And so just as soon as those thresholds had been reached is when we brought it to council. So we had been monitoring it weekly, and it just kept getting worse.
Yeah, yes, it did.
Yeah.
It's very difficult to turn across two lanes.
Right.
Yeah, very dangerous. Okay, thank you very much. Um, and thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? I'm just looking at Maria because I'm making sure she's chat, okay. I see what you're saying. All right, very good. Um, I want to take a personal moment here, not seeing any more colleagues, and let the folks in the room and anybody watching. I was just informed that, uh, one of our leaders of our community for many, many years, and, and has made a significant impact on our city and our community has passed. Clyde Mayfield just passed away. That is a terrible loss for the city of Davenport, terrible loss for our community. He has been an active member of many organizations and many pieces of this city, this community, this, the school district, et cetera. And his passion and efforts to make this place a better, um, place for everyone can't be probably equalized. He was passionate about kids and doing the right thing. And I'll just take a personal preference, and we'll have a moment of silence now. Thank you. Not seeing any more of my colleagues. Maria, I'll just say, are you wanting anything? I don't think so right now. Very good. Okay, we'll move to our four areas for discussion. The first one is community development. Alderman Grip and Alderwoman Lee will lead those discussions. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two items on discussion for community development this evening. The first item is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ twenty-five, being the request of Reverend Richard Hazlitt to rezone five oh eight and five ten Marquette Street from R four C, Single and Two-Family Central Residential District to C one Neighborhood Commercial District. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? This item will move on. Item number two is a resolution setting a public hearing on Wednesday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty, at five thirty PM on the proposed conveyance of city-owned parcels, fourteen twelve West Fourteenth Street to Carrie and Misha Davis petitioners, and sixteen nineteen West Pleasant Street to Brialen and Donald Dickerson petitioners. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this resolution? Anyone from the council? Seeing no one, this item will move on as well. I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set the agenda.
And two, for community development, be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Maria's chatting in with me, so I'll give you a thumbs up or thumbs down. She's a thumbs up.
All right. Any opposed? All right, that concludes community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. The second area is public safety. Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Jobson will lead that discussion. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Honored. The first item of the discussion is a second consideration ordinance amending schedule thirteen of chapter ten point nine six entitled seven-ton truck restriction by heading fifty-ninth street from Main Street to sixty-first street. Anybody from the public, council? Number two is a resolution approving the following street, lane, and public ground closures on the listed dates and times to hold an outdoor event. Eric Hayes' graduation party, fourteen fifty-one West Thirteenth Street, Saturday, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty, one PM to nine thirty PM. The closure is East West Alley from Fillmore Street to Washington Avenue between West Twelfth Street and West Thirteenth Street. Public, council? Number two is Tim Shea, Eastern Avenue Farms Block Party, Bell Court, Saturday, September sixth, two thousand twenty, twelve PM to nine thirty PM. Closure, Bell Court from East Sixty-first Street to Parkview Lane. Public, council? And number three is a motion approving noise, noise variance requested by various events and the listed dates and times. The first one is Uncle Norm's Fireworks. Fireworks show after roadie at the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds, twenty-eight fifteen West Locust Street, Saturday, August eighth, two thousand twenty, nine PM to ten PM fireworks over fifty dB. That should be a short fifteen minutes fireworks. Anybody from public, council? Number two is Tim Dolman Festival Appraisers, Leclerc Park, Saturday, September fifth, two thousand twenty, five PM to eleven PM, outdoor music over fifty dB. Anybody from the public, council? The last one is Tim Shea, Eastern Avenue Farms Block Party, Bell Court, Saturday, September fifth, two thousand twenty, twelve PM to nine thirty PM, outdoor music over fifty dB.
Mr. Chair, I could be wrong, but I think you might have skipped Eric Hayes' graduation party.
Oh, okay. Eric Hayes' graduation party, fourteen fifty-one West Thirteenth Street, Saturday, August twenty-second, two thousand twenty, three PM to nine PM, outdoor music over fifty dB. Anybody from public, council? And the last item is the motion approving beer and liquor license. And those, we don't go through those. Those will be on our social media platform if you have any questions. Alderman Jobson, please set the agenda, reminding that the Uncle Norm's will be voted on later on.
All right, I make a motion that all items be placed on the consent agenda except for Uncle Norm's fireworks, item to be voted on later this evening.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderman, um, Jobson. The next area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Dorman will discuss these items. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have fourteen items this evening for Public Works. The first item is a second consideration of an ordinance amending chapter sixteen point two eight point zero five zero entitled improvement sewers of the Davenport Municipal Code by amending section sixteen point two eight point zero six zero, therefore relating to the city collecting compensation for televising services performed in the process of sanitary sewer acceptance. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is the first consideration of an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point zero eight point three zero zero of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled permits. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is the first consideration of an ordinance amending chapter fifteen point one six of the Davenport Municipal Code entitled electrical code. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution of acceptance for Public Works High Bay Roof Replacement Project Bid, number twenty-one zero four. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving a contract for the Northwest Boulevard and North Division Street Left Turn Lanes Project to Langmont Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six, a resolution approving the proposed resolution of necessity for the two thousand twenty alley resurfacing program covering the north-south alley between Pershing Avenue and Iowa Street from East Columbia Avenue to East Carrefour Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding the contract for the thirteenth street reconstruction Zenith to Stark and Zenith to Waverly Project to Five Cities Construction Company of Coal Valley, Illinois, in the amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty-five cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Just before I move on, uh, staff, can we make sure that we have plenty of signage out before this project starts and we notify the neighbors? Thanks. Seeing no one else, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding the contract for the fire training site preparation project to Valley Construction Company of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can we have the fire chief come up and give the public a little update about this important project? Oh, how about the fire marshal?
Clay Merritt, not the fire marshal, uh, Public Works. So when the, uh, what is generally known as the Wacky Water Site was where we had our, uh, our previous fire training center. So when we're moving that, uh, we were looking for good locations. It actually works out that we can move it to our Public Works facility. We have plenty of room out there. It's a good combination for us at Public Works and the fire department. It's a good, secure location. This project, we have a number of components, um, kind of intertwined with, with moving them out there. This is regrading and pouring foundations for them. We already have contracts to move, uh, their burn tower, which is where they train in, and then we're, we're getting one for their OSHA prop, too. So this is just one of those projects that we have that's in line.
Alderman Lee?
Change to the traffic or the road situation or parking? I don't know how many people will be using this.
Uh, there will not be. So there won't be any changes to Tremont. So they'll take the, um, what is the west side entrance off of Tremont into the Public Works facility. Our fire department's used to, that's where we go and they get our fire trucks worked on. So, I mean, they're very familiar with the facility. And, and we're not anticipating that, you know, in terms of Public Works traffic or fire traffic, where we all work pretty good together. And so we'll, it'll be perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clay. You know, this is extremely important because we have probably the greatest fire department in the United States. And we have a nationally accredited fire department. In order to keep the high standard of firefighting, you know, this facility is extremely important. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose and Alderwoman Lee. Is anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the one-year contract for the long-line painting, twenty, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one project, Ostrom Painting and Sand Blasting Incorporated in Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number ten is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the River Center South Roof Replacement Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eleven is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the city hall security improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number twelve is a motion approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Fifty-first Street Culvert Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number thirteen is a motion approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Sixth and Vine Traffic Circle Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Please step forward and give your name, word.
I'm John DeTe, forty-seven, twenty-five, Kinnellworth. First, this is really sad to hear about Clyde passing. He and Julie were doing health food way before people were thinking about health food. I want to thank Alderman Dunn, especially Alderman McGuinness and Alderman Grip for making this traffic circle, um, a reality. Central Community Circle, Ecumenical Housing Development Group, One Eighty, Project Renewal, Cafe and Vine, Humility Homes and Services, and all the residents of the Sixth and Vine and Ash Neighborhood love our circle. And especially Nicole Gleason and Brian made it happen also. This is much more than just a circle. It's a, a community asset. The circle has really slowed down traffic at that five-point intersection, um, where hundreds of people are crossing that, that intersection every single day, going back and forth from the food pantry to the cafe, to the shelter, to the project renewal, after-school programs. There's just literally pedestrian traffic and vehicle traffic there all the time. And so the circle has slowed things down a lot. But even more than that, um, we've planted a, a live tree in the middle of that cement for the last two years for our holiday celebration. We've had Halloween celebrations and Valentine celebrations. And now with our green grass and some landscaping, we won't have to drill our tree into the cement anymore. And we're hoping, um, that there will be some landscaping added to the, um, plan as well as, um, an opportunity for us to either have a sculpture at the top of the circle or a real live tree that will be, we won't have to cut down a tree every year. We'll have a real live tree to decorate, all according to public safety. We also hope that there will be improved crosswalks and more visible arrows so that people will go around the circle the right direction. It's been a learning curve for all of us. We want to work with the city closely and making this a great asset for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Alderman Grip.
Thank you. John, I'm so glad you came down here. It, it's been a few years now we've been working on this, and it seems like such a small project. But it is, it is a project to be really proud of, and, and you did a lot of leadership on that. So thank you for that, and all of the people and organizations that, that you listed. So I think it's probably been two or three years now where some folks asked me to come down and, and take a look at this intersection, which was a- and take a look at this intersection, which was a public safety hazard for pedestrians and for other reasons. And can the city do anything about this? And I think the initial solution was over a million dollars to upgrade this intersection. And the question was, so when will the city get that into their budget? And my answer was, the city will never get a million dollars to do this into their budget. But something needs to be done and I think there's a path forward on it. And so what we did was, you know, we use really cheap materials to outline what the neighborhood wanted. Okay, we put a circle there, not using cement, using rubber barriers. And we put up signs and we put up paint and we put up grabbers with reflectors on them, okay? And we proved out the concept that it worked and it was necessary and it can be done. And here we are, three years later, for seventy-five thousand dollars, we're putting in a permanent roundabout that neighbors needed for their community, for their safety, and it's awesome. I'm really proud of it. I know it's small, but it's a source of pride for that neighborhood. It's a source of pride for me, working with Alderwoman McGinnis and all of those nonprofits and all of those neighbors and being down there when they put the Christmas tree in the middle of the circle and we sang Christmas carols and then all the pedestrians came by and sang Christmas carols. That's a memory I'll always remember from being on the city council. So if our forestry department does not have money for the shrubs and the Christmas tree, okay, I will do that out of my beautification dollars, but I would like to see kind of the final touches be put on this. And if, at one point, we talked about having a, I don't know the official term, but basically an add-on to have electricity to that, to the grass portion in the center. I don't know if that's still an option or not. If you could just let me know next week or sometime this week, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Clay, could you come up? We have a slideshow about this so people can kind of see what we're talking about. And while you're coming up, I do want to also say thank you. And I want to, you know, I started hearing about this at community policing meetings. Brad Prebeston, who's the head of Central Community Circle, has lived there for years. Bill Boom was the first person who kind of helped push this forward. So I'm going to give him a little credit as well. I'm just glad to see it, you know, coming to fruition. So tell us what we're seeing here.
Sure. So what you'll have is basically an illustrative drawing of what we put together. The circle itself is slightly larger than the temporary barriers that we have up with currently. And you'll probably notice that as no doubt that's been mentioned, that a lot of times if people are going in an eastern direction, they'll just cut straight through, they'll just drive straight, so you're not really going for it. So we enlarged the circle, kind of created that bump out on the southwest side. Basically, it forces traffic to slow down to be able to navigate around it. We will have rather additional and increased safety for pedestrians through there. Slowing that traffic down will naturally occur that, but also including ADA ramps and sidewalks there as well. The red around it is colored concrete, so it kind of stands out. But then we will have grass in the center because I know there's been various conversations about putting a statue or putting trees or grass. So this way, we just have grass. That way, when the conversation is finalized, there's something that can be done there. And I'm sure when it comes down to planting a tree, if that's the way it goes, we can make that happen. But if you're willing to pay for it, we'll clearly catch you up on that too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That it? Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Anyone else? Seeing none of this item, we'll move on. And item number fourteen is a Motion approving a lease extension between the Isaac Walton League of America and the Davenport Municipal Airport through February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderwoman Lee.
Very much, Alderman Dunn. Does this involve any cost to the city, this extension of the lease?
Clay Merritt is coming up again.
Your exercise tonight.
I got my steps in. No, it does not. So it's actually a payment that they make to us and it's per FAA standards since the land is on airport land.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Clay and Alderwoman Lee. Anyone else? Seeing none of this item, we'll move on. And Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place item number thirteen on the discussion agenda and all other items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The agenda is set and that concludes Public Works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The last area to discuss is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Peacock will lead that discussion. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are eight items on the agenda this evening. The first item is the Second Consideration Ordinance Amending Chapter fifteen point three two of the Davenport Municipal Code titled Uniform Fire Code to adopt the International Code Council's two thousand and fifteen International Fire Code with amendments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss this item? Counsel?
No.
The item will move on. Item number two is a Resolution authorizing and approving a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement and providing for the issuance and securing of the payment of eight million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand Sewer Revenue Bonds Series twenty twenty. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss this item? Counsel? Item will move on. Item number three, Resolution setting a public carrying on Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, at five thirty to convey city-owned parcel W zero four five three dash O L D to the owners of three-two-zero-seven Field Crest Drive, the adjacent parcel to the northeast. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? Counsel? Item number four is a Resolution setting a public carrying on Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, at five thirty to convey city-owned parcel X one-one-zero-one B zero-six-B to the owners of nine-two-seven West Sixtieth Street, the adjacent parcel to the north. Anyone from the public? Counsel? Item number five is a Resolution setting a public carrying on Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M to convey city-owned parcel F zero-zero-four-six dash one-six to Francisco Brown, petitioner. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? And item number six is a Resolution setting a public carrying on Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, at five thirty to convey city-owned parcel G zero-zero-three-eight dash three-six-B located on the north side of the three hundred block of West Ninth Street to Lisa Avilla, owner of nine-zero-eight Harrison Street. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? Counsel? Item number seven is a Motion authorizing the mayor to sign intergovernmental twenty-eight D agreements with the Davenport Community School District for the assignment of a school liaison officer and a school resource officer. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss this item? Whoever's first, just please step forward, state your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. Robert Scott, Associate Superintendent with Davenport Schools. I'm just here to show our support with Dr. Kabelski and our school board to say we are supportive of the SRO program. I've personally been involved with the SRO program for the last fifteen years in my administrative role for the schools and we are excited to work with, I don't know if you call it a panel or a board, but with community also in determining the direction of that program in the future, though. If you have any questions from that, I also have Bruce, if you want to have Bruce McKee.
Hi, I'm Bruce McKee. I'm the security supervisor for the Davenport School District, retired policeman from the city of Davenport, seeing this program in its place for a long time, going back to the early eighties. It's invaluable and the support the city police department gives us at the schools, you can't put a value on it. So we just hope to continue this program. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Keely. I'm three-two-four-zero, Lorton Avenue, Davenport, Iowa. I come before the body tonight wearing two hats. I am president of the Davenport Education Association, but more importantly, tonight, I'm a member of the DEA Multicultural Group, which is a group that is in partnership with the Davenport School District and our association. And recently, we had a survey sent out to all our members about the DEA regarding the SROs in our schools. It was clear that the survey brought more questions than answers. We presented this resolution to the Davenport School Board on July twenty-seventh and I am presenting it to the body tonight. Pretty much what came out, it was a theme of questions that have emerged. We, as teachers, would like to have this body, like the Davenport School Board, examine what are the purposes of SROs in our schools? How do we monitor them to know that their purpose is being met? How often are SROs deal directly with criminal activity in the building? The committee is requesting data on the actions for the SROs, including the charging of students in crimes and the ticking of parents that may occur. This information may be useful if it was broken down by building ethnicity or socioeconomic status. The role of the SROs versus a security officer. It is clear that the responses of the teachers we're using in these terms were interchangeably used and we think we need clarification for that. What is the training that the district and obviously with the city would provide SROs regarding the expectations of their jobs, district procedures, discipline policies, individual IEP or five oh four plans? They are very much a part of our schools and therefore we thought it should be brought up. And what professional development was given planned to all staff on de-escalation techniques and restorative justice? Many teachers mentioned that they want much support in their buildings as possible and they did not feel prepared to de-escalate situations involving students. As I said before, we presented this as a resolution to the school board. We would gladly give you copies if you would like. Now I'm taking my hat from president or member of the DEA Multicultural Committee to a teacher at West High School who's been there for twenty-six years. I have, I'm in a position at my high school that I, by choice, have a duty where I work with Ricky Terrell, our security, one of our security guards, on the early morning shift. I am doing duties when kids arrive at the school outside. West High, in my opinion, has a stellar SRO in Curtis Carter. He's been there for ten years. He is everything that you'd ever want in an SRO. He listens to kids, they trust him, he cares. He is professional beyond belief with everybody is there. I can say that Curtis is a member of the faculty, although he is not a teacher. He is just as much part of West High as I am, as Ricky and others. And I personally, as a teacher at West High, think that if we want to sit there and help improve the use of SROs, we turn to people as stellar as Officer Carter and ask him and reflect upon his skills and his talents and use them as a model for other schools. I've also heard some marvelous things about other SROs in other high schools. One, sorry that I forget the gentleman's name, but at Central, one of them just retired a couple of years ago and staff members told me there he was sensational. Thank you very much from the audience. I heard nothing but rave reviews for him. There have been some questions with SROs. I do want to point out that I have talked to a gentleman who was a, I was president from two thousand and five to two thousand and seven and I asked him when he was on the school board, did we ever review SROs back then when I was president? And he was a school board member. He said, no, we never really did. So I think that if we're going to get to the best of what is out there, the recommendations that we present to this body, that we presented to the school board and the work with Dr. Kabelski and other committees can give us a conclusion that would be the best interest of our kids and of our schools. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Terrell and I'm a security supervisor at West High School. I've been there for, this is my sixteenth year. And I've been there from when they used to have officers come in in the evening, I mean, in the mornings off of graveyard shifts and work for a few hours. And I have to be honest, back then, I wasn't really pleased with how it was then because I saw the tiredness in the officers and the ones that didn't really kind of help the situations in the building. Okay? So I did make a complaint to my principal and I believe this is where the SROs actually stirred up, where we have a permanent officer in our building now. Since then, we've had two officers in our building, Jason Gillespie and Curtis Carter. Jason Gillespie was there for two years. Carter's been there for about eleven years, ten or eleven years. Now I can truly say my vision on, my sight on this right now, we need them. We can't dismiss this. Our jail, together with the security staff, the administration and our officer in our building, is really, really tight. And I'm speaking about West High School, you know, because that's where I've been for fifteen years. Okay? So we need this. So if there is any question about whether or not you have to question whether or not we need this or not, we do. And Officer Carter at West High School is a perfect person for this position. He's a perfect person for training for this position. Officer Carter has twelve years of negotiating crisis background, okay? So he's very, very good, very valuable to West High School. And that's all I can speak on is West High School. I know the officer at Central, but I can't tell you how his rapport is with the kids. I can tell you how Officer Carter's rapport is with the kids. It's excellent. And if Officer Carter was not there at the beginning of the school year, kids would wonder why. It wouldn't be, I'm happy Officer Carter's gone. No, kids would wonder why. They would, because we have that camaraderie with the kids, okay? And that's from the officer, administration, security team, and along with my team, because I got their permission to say their names, that they are in agreeance with me. Chris Carr, Shemane Sorano, Romero Hernandez, Perry Hudson Jackson, and Shannon Neal. He was a security personnel, but he's the J C L at our building now. So they all gave me permission to mention their names in agreeance with me on this speak, just speaking right now on Officer Carter's stature at West High School. So he's very valuable and we need the SROs in our buildings. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say that the SROs really, they're part of our staffs. I mean, but they're really part of our families and they are embraced by everybody. I wonder what he's talking about. And I would say with Lieutenant Smith and Chief Sikorski, our relationship has been very much where we work close hand in hand with everything. And that's the only way this is going to be successful, is working closely with everyone. So again, thank you for your support on the city behalf with the Davenport Schools.
Hello again. My name is Laura Elena Rodriguez. I'm speaking on behalf of the Quad Cities DSA.
I apologize. Would you please state your address or ward, please? And your address and ward, please?
I actually live in Moline, but I'm still a member of this entire community. I work in Davenport, in fact. So speaking bluntly, first of all, I'd like to address Clyde Mayfield's passing. He was somebody who was a friend of Quad Cities DSA. He came to speak to our group. He spoke to us about racism in Davenport. That was his specialty. That's what he came to talk to us about. He was passionate about the kids in Davenport. The school closings really affected him greatly, gentrification. And one of the things he had mentioned was getting school resource officers out of schools as a solution to the problem, stating that they caused more harm than good in contributing to the school-to-prison pipeline. There's no better way to honor his memory than to finally take action on something he's been fighting his entire career here. I think it's really important to listen to somebody, even if they're no longer in the room. His legacy lingers. I think the number one priority moving forward should be to figure out what is turned over to police that they shouldn't be doing. They're not parents, they're not teachers, they shouldn't be mediators or counselors at the school. They come in with a gun and a badge and the ability to enforce laws, the ability to arrest a student, drag that student out of the school, charge them with a crime. It doesn't work after one of the last school shootings, one of many. One of the school resource officers was found to have left the building. He was freaked out. It just contributes to this larger picture of incarceration and a total lack of and a total lack of hope for children, especially children of color. Davenport was found to have a problem with disparity in the way that students were being treated, specifically students of color with disabilities, being disproportionately punished in schools, being disproportionately suspended, taken into seclusion rooms, which are horrifying to find out as a parent that that even exists. As a mother of a child with special needs, Davenport was immediately off the table as a place to live after finding that out. Not much has been done since finding this out, as evidenced by the school board meetings. District-wide Davenport is a community group that's been working on this, and they have reported that I don't think any of the current sitting city... whatever you call yourselves, aldermen, have been present at those school board meetings when they were speaking. I would just like to suggest maybe finding an alternative to a school resource officer. I know it's pretty hard for kids to find time to find a counselor or a social worker in school. They're often totally overwhelmed, and maybe you could hire a few more of those because God knows, a lot of the students are dealing with poverty, adverse childhood experiences that are known to cause trauma. And trauma is probably the most pervasive thing that you're going to see in bad behavior in students in the schools. You're seeing kids who have been traumatized by violence in their neighborhoods that is present and prevalent, not because of, you know, an inherent nature of the neighborhood. It's a lack of investment in those neighborhoods that you're seeing. And all of that carries over to school. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Brian Winger, also with Quad City DSA. I don't live in Davenport. Also with Decriminalize Davenport. So there are about 50% of the people out there that think more cops equal less crime. The other 50% know this, that cops don't reduce crime, they police crime. Putting more into policing doesn't reduce crime. Putting money in the communities reduces crime. That's why life is the way it is in Davenport. You spend over half the budget on police. They haven't reduced crime at all. Over half the budget. 28 million. Start investing that money into the community. Soon you will find your residents won't be calling for more police because there were four shootings the past weekend with one left dead. They'll be calling for more community programs that reduce crime because that's what actually works. Now you have an alderman calling for militarized police to be released on his constituents. That's just shameful. I don't even know what to say about that. You already spent $28 million on them. When does it stop? It's not working. I ask you to Google Camden, New Jersey. See what they did. Do that here. Camden, New Jersey. Now you're expanding the juvenile detention center. There was a vote on it a couple councils ago. I don't remember. Expanding it, building a new one, whatever. And you're entrenching officers in the school. Is it me, or is it easy to put two and two together? New detention center, police in the schools. That way you can justify the expansion to the taxpayers, right? I mean, that's what this is, right? It's not for the benefit of the children, I can tell you that much. From the ACLU, data shows that the presence of school-based mental health providers not only improves outcomes for students, but can also improve overall school safety. By contrast, there is no evidence that increased presence of officers in schools improves school safety. Indeed, in many cases, it causes harm. Since Columbine, there have been 10,000 SRO hires. They have stopped zero shootings. They have arrested 1 million students, most of which are students of color. That's the start of the school-to-prison pipeline in Davenport, and we want to stop it.
Hi, I'm Jane I. Dux. I live at 2111 East Lombard Street, and Matt's my alderman. John Keely, what he had to say regarding the survey that just was completed, I hope that you really take that to heart. I'm glad to hear that the resolution was presented to the Davenport School Board. I'd like to see all of you, you know, take a good, hard look at it. Officer Lopez was a great SOR at Davenport Central. And I met him when one of my foster care kids came back to live with me at the age of 18 and needed to finish his senior year in high school because he had dropped out. And I actually met Officer Lopez over at the Davenport Central football games. You know, he was in the community. Sounds a lot like the Carter SOR at Davenport West. My youngest child, unceremoniously and rather undramatically or whatever, just graduated from Davenport Central. You know, I mean, it was a drive-by, couldn't even take a picture to get her diploma. It was really kind of sad. And she didn't have any behavior issues. But my son, at 16, was arrested at Davenport High School and went off to prison as a 16-year-old. You know, he's now back as a 20-year-old and doing quite, quite well for himself, thank goodness. I met John DeTay when my son was arrested, you know, at 16. And he learned about restorative justice from him. And we've talked, you know, with people on this city council many times. And you really ought to be ashamed as a 23-year veteran of the city council and the lack of leadership that you've had for the city of Davenport in trying to resolve crime and criminals. That's how you refer to them all. And what do we need a Hummer for? You know? Why does our city council pay for our Davenport City Police to buy a Hummer when we can't even, you know, provide for a really great drug and alcohol program? So what my son went to as an after-school program at Southell Junior High, where he met his first black savage gang member through C.A.D.S. Why aren't we putting money into better drug and alcohol and substance abuse program for our kids? And mental health programs for our kids? You know, I mean, my kid came to live with me at the age of five, a crack baby that had a mountain to climb from the moment he was conceived. You know, and it was a product of Davenport School District. Public schools, except for a few years, he went to St. Paul the Apostle, you know, hoping that maybe he could, you know, gain some value there. But he was discriminated against there. He's falsely accused of things there because of the color of his skin. So we threw him, you know, we sixth grade started over at Southell then, you know, first three years at McKinley. No restorative justice in our school district. No restorative justice, you know, in our community. You want to criminalize everybody. You want to militarize our police.
I'm sorry, Ms., we have a practice of asking you to please address the council.
I beg your pardon, but he and I have a long history, you know, of... Where's this leadership? Where's your leadership? You know, my first conversation with Matt Dorman, who, when he was running, was about juvenile justice and what we need to do in this community. You know? By trying to communicate with some other members on this council, you know, about the need for restorative justice and juvenile justice and what we need to do. When you were all sworn in, and that was the last city council meeting, well, not the last city council meeting I attended, because I came, you know, a couple of other times, but the COVID hit and la, la, la. But I talked about the youth advocacy program, YAP. You know, that some members of our community and members of the Davenport or the Scott County Sheriff Department went and visited up in Chicago, and we had them, a panel of them, come to our community. And, you know, for the price of the golf carts that you bought, what was that, $90,000? You spend on golf carts? For $80,000, we could bring the YAP Youth Advocacy Program to the city. You know, it's a 24/7 mentoring program that addresses the whole family for the price of the golf carts that you just spent this past January or February. You know? And I'm not saying that we don't need the SORs because there's some wonderful ones. What you just described at Davenport West, and how Officer Lopez was at Davenport Central, and probably there's others like him. But take, again, take the gentleman that's on the security at West's advice. They need to be trained. They need to be trained in restorative justice and de-escalation. But at the same time, we need more mental health counselors in our schools than we need police officers. We need more drug and alcohol substance abuse counselors in our schools, which there are none, than we need police officers. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else from the public like to address this item? Is there anyone from the council? Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss you? No, step forward, please. State your name and address or ward, please.
I'm slow and freezing. I didn't wear clothes very well. Sorry. My name's Gary Thrapp. I live on 2525 East Locust Street in Davenport. Been a citizen for about 30 years. My wife grew up in this area. I want to bring a little bit of a voice for the SRO and for a lot of kids out in our schools that are struggling. And I see the benefit of the SROs and how the police officers are interacting with the kids. I work, over the last five years, I've been out at each of the middle schools and high schools in Davenport, working and partnering with the school system to talk to the kids about violence. It's called the Quad City Youth Summit, Stop the Violence, Keep Us Safe. I started it five years ago. And it's developed into, the last three years, I've talked with every freshman in the Davenport school system and every sixth grader at the middle schools. They're telling me a lot. We can learn a lot from what our kids are telling us. And they're telling us that the SROs are not the problem that they're having. They're learning it that it's the problem, but they don't have experience that it's a problem. What do I mean by that? One of the questions that I ask them is, "What do you hear about the police on social media and the news?" Immediately, I hear the same three things. They hate black people, they kill innocent people, and they are racist. That's what they hear on the news and social media. Then, of course, I ask, "What experience do you have in that regard?" Because as a community member, I want to help fix that. We don't get as many stories. Now, that doesn't mean there aren't stories out there. I would love to fix them, but it's hard to fix them when everybody's racist, if you know what I'm saying. So let's dig in on what I've learned about the SROs because I've seen them with my eyes. I've seen them at work. I know many of the SROs, and I've gotten to know them based on their work out at the schools. We can talk about Officer Lovelady. And what I see as a goal for the SROs is, number one, to keep the kids and the teachers safe and admins safe. Number two, to build relationships with them. I hear so many people say, "Well, let's get rid of the SROs." But we also need a good relationship between the police and our community. What an ideal place to do it and teach our kids not to be afraid of them than out at the schools. So I see Officer Lovelady at Smart, day after day after day, when I'm out there. I ask every sixth grader at Smart, "How many of you know your SRO?" And they're like, "Huh?" I say, "How many know Officer Lovelady?" 90% of them raise their hands with enthusiasm. It's incredible. They love Officer Lovelady. Want to model for, you know, a SRO. He's awesome. We could talk about Officer Carter. Many people certainly have. I've seen him at work out at West. I'm going to move on because he's good, and you already know that. Officer Burkle at Wooden Sudlow. Every time I see him, he asks me about a 30-year-old man. I'm trying to help myself, who he arrested several years ago. This 30-year-old in our community was taught by his father how to deal drugs and how to smoke weed when he was 14 years old. He don't have any problems with SROs or police. He has more problems than that, that's for sure. We can talk about Officer Anil out of North. I saw him talking to one of our young men who's really struggling in our community. Actually, he's in jail right now for attempted murder. But he was talking with him out at the school with one of the admins, a young man that I've known for some time. And I went up to the young man a little bit later, and I said, "Is everything okay?" The young man didn't want to go home. Why? I know him real well. His dads, he's never met. His mom's in jail, and he lives with his aunt, who's a drunk. He don't have problems with SROs. He's got deep, deep issues. He's also been in a police because he's one who steals cars. He's one who's been busy out in the streets. He's had real good conversations with police officers in the back of the car because he doesn't want to go home. Officer Berger, we could talk for hours. Met a young man a couple of years ago. He walked on the street, should be over at Davenport West. Why didn't he go to school? Didn't have a haircut. He'll call me up once in a while, say, "Hey, got any work for me?" And I said, "What's going on?" Turns out he needs a haircut. He didn't want to go, not looking good. We could talk about... He told my wife one time, when we hired him to do some leaf cleaning at one of our properties, he told my wife one time, when we got to know him, that he doesn't like to go home because his mom steals everything he's got for her own drug addiction. He doesn't have problems with SROs. A lot of them have arrested him, a lot of police officers, but he don't have problems with them. So bottom, Officer Sharif up at Central. It was huge at one of our youth summits up there. One of the young ladies had some disdain for the police. And she, he actually...
Sir, if you could wrap up your comments.
I'll leave it with this. Building relationships is huge. Safety is huge. I have a letter given to me by a young man at Davenport West after one of our summits. He didn't say a word during the summit, but he walked up and he handed this to me, and he said, "I put my story on the back. I almost became a school shooter in the eighth grade at one of our middle schools not far from here."
Sir, I apologize, but we do try to keep to a strict time schedule. You can leave any comments you wish with.
Thank you.
Brian.
Should scare.
Is there anyone else from the public? State your name and address or ward, please.
John DeTay, 4725 Kenilworth. Just a couple of process questions. I thought the DEA questions were really good. I'm hoping that the responses will be made public so that we'll be able to see what those responses are. And perhaps with the... I'm not even sure when we're opening the schools and what the schools will look like. Do we really need school resource officers in buildings where there's only half the population? So maybe there's time to sort of back up and include some community folks in this task force. It sounds like it's council members, police, and school officials and no public. And there's been, the Juvenile Justice Coalition of Scott County has been working really hard on this issue. It sounds like the DSA has been working on it. Dr. Grant Tejan at St. Ambrose has researched school resource officers. If there could be a larger tent involved in this process. I don't think all of us are saying no school resource officers, but if there would be a balance. I know that the school district has a great program called Check and Connect, and some investment in that. If there's going to be a lot of kids at home during the school year, perhaps we need to invest more money in getting more checking connectors, if that's what they're called, out into the community. And I think Mr... One of the folks from the school district said it's hard to put a value on it, but is there a value? I know that the Bechtel Trust has invested $600,000 in two officers for three years. So that sounds like it's $100,000 an officer for the intermediate school. So if there's comparable for the two, for the three school resource officers at the three high schools, that sounds like a $500,000 a year investment in school resource officers. The DSA folks really pointed this out that the disproportionality of young people of color going into the juvenile justice system in Scott County is worse than anywhere else in this state. And there's... We're not saying it's just the school resource officers. We're just not saying it's the police department. But a lot of this came out on the call on Saturday. There's just inequities across our whole city that we really have to address and stop criminalizing young people. Thank you.
Please state your name and address or ward, please.
My name is Kelly Cruz. Actually, I live in Rock Island. I just wanted to quick make a point. The person, not just the person that spoke, but before him, that gentleman, everything that he said is a case for why we really need social workers and mental health care people more than we need police in the schools. And the police department has such a huge budget, and we're not filling those needs, and we're not solving the problems. You know, he brought up this person as an example, but he said, "Oh, he's in jail now." Well, what good does that do? And so I would really encourage you all to... My neighbors here up in Davenport encourage you to take a step back, slow down, and really look and see if this is what you want to do. The state of Iowa's own guidelines say there should be... The state of Iowa's own guidelines say there should be a social worker for every 250 kids, and here, there's a social worker for every, like, 8,000 and something kids. Why is that? Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seen none, I'll ask if there's anyone from the council that would like to comment. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I want to thank Gary for everything he does in our community. You know, Gary and Clyde Mayfield, you know, they walk to talk, and, you know, we're extremely fortunate, we have people like that. I think Gary really explained the dynamics of the families today and the challenges. And there's a huge need. You know, the schools got to make their decision on that. You know, the city of Davenport will, we've always reached out to the Davenport Public Schools to be a strong partner with them, and, you know, whatever their decision is here. But, you know, it's always great to hear how outstanding our great police offices are, because, you know, I think we have the greatest police department in the country.
Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. Alderman Condon. A couple of disclosures first. I'm not for or against the resource officers. I don't have any children in the schools. My youngest is 31. However, she and her husband have an active, assertive child, who is my grandchild, who looks older than he is, and he is black. So, and I know what that can mean for people reacting to a black child who looks older than he is. I do support, if we are going to agree to have SROs, they absolutely have to have some level of defined tasks. What are they doing in our schools? But I am not prepared to support a blanket authorization to sign intergovernmental 28D agreements with the Davenport Community School District without some data. We've heard a lot of anecdotal information with a little data in there that may or may not be from Davenport. I appreciate the surveys that Mr. Thrapp did, because that is local here. But I have a series of questions that I believe need to be answered before we are prepared to make a decision on, on what's before us tonight and on Wednesday. I want to know why we have SROs in the elementary, intermediate, and high schools. I want to know the proportion of time that they spend on what types of activities that they're there per the type of school we're in. I want to know what kind of practice and training that they have in de-escalation skills and justice for children. I'd like to know the number of arrests for each school we have by gender, race, and disability, because disabilities are also sometimes leading to arrests. And I'd like to know the types of charges that are brought against the children, and how many lead to expulsion, how long those expulsions are from school, because time not spent in school is time to further get in trouble, and particularly, they're angry. And how many get sent into juvenile assessment and detention? I'd like to know the SRO's contribution to the reuse of the seclusion rooms by school, because I'm pretty horrified by that. What proportion of the incidents could have been done by counselors, social workers, mental health professionals? And how should that be broken out? What proportion of the incidents have any kind of counselor or mental health follow-up so that these students and children get the help that they need? How many school nurses and counselors and mental health and social workers per student at each school? How many do we have? And that includes the school nurses. Those have been cut pretty highly. How many classes or workshops do the SROs teach, and what kind at each school in terms of their interactions? And that's just a beginning of the types of data, not anecdotes, but data that I believe we need before we are prepared to make a decision to authorize the mayor to just enter into these kind of agreements for SROs. Again, I think the steps that we're taking in terms of coming up with statements of work for these people is absolutely critical so that they know their jobs, and we know what they're doing, and the schools can balance out the work between them, the teachers, the nurses, the counselors, whatever we've got in the school. A question I asked last night is, when does the current agreement expire, or agreements? Do we have that answer yet, Ms. Spiegel?
There's actually two agreements here. One is a ratification for last year, and the prospective one is for this school year and the next, so it would expire in 2022.
But when does the current one expire, that we're now voting?
It has expired. We're trying to put a new one in place.
Okay, okay. So there's some level of urgency as students who are going back. But I still think we need this, this type of data in order to make an informed and hopefully wise decision. And to be honest, I think we owe it to our constituents to have that kind of data and not just be making votes on anecdotes. Thank you very much, Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greatly appreciate this opportunity. Can Chief, can you please come up for a second? You must excuse my ignorance or lack thereof, and I, well, some of the things that I like to do is just get the information straight from the source, and it's basic questions. It's not critical or not, but RSOs, I just want, because there's people in the room who really don't know, for them, really. They are police officers, correct?
Or SROs.
RSOs, right.
Yes, they are.
Are they, that's their sole duty?
It is.
So they don't go and do other police tasks?
Correct, with the exception of North High School. North High School, we have officers assigned to that, and it's a, it's a extra duty.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, no, no, I'm good, Chief. I have other comments. So I've heard a lot about the RSOs, and should we have them, should we not have them? And I receive a lot of phone calls, text messages, emails. And I think we get lost in the message. And anybody knows me, I always ask them, what are you asking? So what's on the agenda is the position. Once again, the position of RSO, not the individual. So you hear a lot of people, I think this officer's great. I've heard it a thousand times. But we're talking about the position itself. Should RSOs be in the schools? So, yeah, you may have a great officer or a great RSOs in that school, but should that position be in that school is the question. And I think Alderman, Alderwoman Lee took my thunder, because I had all those questions written down, but that's why she's a great alderperson. But I will add, if we don't have the necessary data, the necessary information, how can we make an informed decision as a council? I say once again, if we don't have the necessary data, the necessary information to make an informed decision, how can we do that as a council? And also, I hear a lot is, well, the police officers or RSOs have great relationships, I hear this a thousand times, with the school, with the kids. But that's not their purpose. What are they assigned to do? If they're, if we want to do PR with the police department, high school kids, elementary school kids, middle school kids, we need a mentorship program. But that's not their assigned duty to build the relationships. If that is, then we need to have that discussion as well. So we need to really figure out and define, like Alderman Lee said, and of course, you know, what exactly are their roles? This is not a PR program. We recently, as a council, delayed action just so a resident can come and speak because of a private parking lot in front of his house. If we cannot do this, delay this action so we can have more community involvement, have someone to bring data to us so we can make an informed decision, then shame on this Can you, Tom, can you do me one favor? You mentioned something about ratification, the last, is it the last MOU? Can you please explain that, please?
Well, there's actually, if you look at the green sheet, there's actually two items on there. One is from a contract that's already happened. It was for last school year. So the council would be ratifying what happened last year.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Peacock. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time. Thank you very much for letting me speak. You know, certainly Alderman Lee and Peacock have, you know, said some very good things. I had yesterday talked about that I also would like more data, and it sounds like there is a task force that's being put together to look at what this relationship is, what the role is. I am, but we are also not the school board. We are not, we do not decide, we're not the school administration. We do not have the power to decide. We have the power to decide this, but we don't have the power to say, well, you should have more. We can say you should have more counselors, you should have more social workers, but we don't run the schools in this town. So the police officers are there, they're there through an agreement that has been longstanding since I came on council. There were, there was additional funding from outside. I don't have any kids in the schools. I've never had children. I will tell you, though, given what's happening in our schools, the number of shooter incidents across America, the number of guns, it would terrify me if I had a child, and I didn't feel like there was, there was, no disrespect to security officers, but, but some, something, someone like this person close at hand. I, I think that for, for good or for ill, we are right here at a time when this contract is to be let. I think there are provisions we could put into this contract that would allow a pause in it, or at least to bring a task force together to look at what are the roles, you know, what are the expectations? I've heard some discussion that it varies from school to school, and there would be, would be better to have a more standardized, you know, what that role is. I've asked to look at data across five years. You know, it's going to be hard to measure how many times an officer has helped de-escalate, and our officers, we know, are trained to help de-escalate. They do it all the time. This is part of the training of our police department. So, but I would like to see data over the last five years also. I'm sure there's some that has to be kept private, and some that's probably not kept because it's illegal to keep data in certain ways. But, but, you know, I would like to see that. But I don't see with as many changes going on right now with our schools and what they're facing, that we take this and say, well, we're not going to act on this right now because, you know, we need more information. I understand the need for more information, but I think it would be wiser for us to, to vote on this and support this with a caveat that this task force does work, comes back to the city council, and then we have a point in this contract, we have it written in the contract, that we can, you know, either go forward with it or change it. And that's what, rather than having a two-year contract that is, you know, set in stone. I would like also to see a couple of community members on this task force. I think that was a really good suggestion. John DeTay and Sonee Hadd, I think, and I think that would be a great idea as well. So that's just my feeling on this. It's pretty simple. It's not as, as elegant as Alderman Lee, and it's well thought out, but those are my feelings about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Doorman.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. First off, I'd like to say that I really do like the concept of this task force to define our strategy and where we think the SRO's duties need to be. Mr. Keely, I ask that you share the items that you listed out with us on city council, because I think a lot of those were some of the main items that I think we all have, and we'd all like this task force to cover and define to understand a lot of those questions. So feel free to email any one of us, and we'll make sure that those get out. I also know that personally speaking, I don't have kids, but I am the youngest one here, and therefore, I graduated high school the soonest, most recently. And I went to high school in North Carolina, and I had a great school resource officer, Officer Mike Leach, and he was probably the most recognizable person from our high school. Everyone looked up to him as a role model. He was someone that was engaged, involved. He was there with everyone. The times you have to talk to him when you knew you might be in trouble, or that someone else was in trouble, yeah, you kind of had the butterflies come to your stomach because, one, you knew you were getting in trouble, and that someone else might be in trouble. That's just human nature of getting in trouble, having those interactions. But his lasting impression isn't that those times you have those negative conversations. It's all of the positive and good things that he brought and the role models that we speak of. And when we talk about diversity in our police force and, and trying to find ways to increase that, I would think the school resource program would be a great opportunity where we can have those people be role models, targeting our, our youth that are in this, this stage of development where they really could use a positive role model to push them to the next edge. And we could, instead of trying to recruit them, we could almost pull them through the process to become members of our own police department and try to improve it from within as well. I see a lot of positives of having school resource officers in there to be role models for all of us. Not only is it from a public safety standpoint where the seconds do matter if something bad was to go wrong, it's also from that role model and community engagement. And I know we have so many larger issues, this, this whole topic that we're discussing, where a lot of these narratives of getting rid of school resource officers and defunding the police, they, they come from true problems in our community that we're trying to tackle. And the police aren't the entire problem. There's so much more that we need to do in order to improve our community. The police, a lot of times, is getting a lot of the negative attention right now, but there's plenty of things with housing and what everyone's talking about with mental health and social workers and other things like that. There's so much more we can do, and unfortunately, tonight, we are only trying to tackle what us as the city of Davenport, not the school board, not the county, not the state, not the federal government, what we can tackle. And that's having a school resource officer here within our community. And I personally think it's something that is positive and something that we would grow from and gain from, and so I am in support of passing this along.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. You know, I do have my own anecdotal evidence that I can talk about, and I'm a product of Davenport Central High School. My kids go to Davenport Public Schools. They will graduate from Davenport Public Schools. I've coached at Davenport Central for 11 years. I'm committed to the success of Davenport Public Schools. My children's education depends on it. This community depends on it. Officer Lopez was, was the SRO at Central, and as has been said many times tonight, he was an influential member in our community. And he was a net positive for Davenport Central and all the people who went there. But as other folks have pointed out tonight, that isn't how we make decisions on this. And I kind of view the SRO a little bit differently, I think, than what's been said tonight, which is, we are a service provider for the Davenport Community School District, okay? And the Davenport Community School District identified in the 1980s that it was to the benefit of the Davenport Community School System to have SROs at their high schools, and then they made the decision to have SROs in their junior high schools. And they asked the city of Davenport to provide that service, and we have provided that service. And as I understand it, and as I've heard tonight, the Davenport Community School District continues to believe that that is a necessary service that they need to have in the schools. And my position on it is, if the Davenport Community Schools makes the determination that's in the best interest of their students, which is their charge, the health, safety, and education of Davenport Community School students, that's their charge, that's not our charge, then we execute the service that they ask for. Now, I do agree that setting expectations and outcomes is good. That's what we do with all of our service That's what we do with all of our, uh, service contracts, right? We started that a few years ago. If you perform a service for the city of Davenport, whether it be economic development or tourism, or what, uh, running our event center, whatever it is, we're going to set expectations and expect results. So thank you, Mayor, for setting that, uh, that team up. And I look forward to seeing what, uh, they come up with. Um, but as long as the, uh, Davenport Community Schools is asking for this service, um, I think we continue to provide that service and trust in them and their ability, uh, to, to educate our children and keep them safe. Now, another thing that keeps coming up is, well, why don't you replace the police officers with, uh, counselors, mental health professionals, et cetera, et cetera? I don't disagree with that. Okay? We spent a year talking about how we reduce crime in the city of Davenport. And that was the number one thing we said is how do we get all of these government entities, nonprofits, people to come together and provide preventative services? Okay? Police officers are at the end. The, the propensity for crime starts 10 years before. The police officers are at the end. You can't blame them for the product that they, they are charged with catching the people who commit crimes. Okay? We have to do better at preventing them. So I don't disagree that we need that stuff. Okay? But the city of Davenport does not employ counselors, mental health professionals. That's not what we do. We have cops, we have police officers, we have guys who drive dump trucks, we have people who build roads. That is the function of government that we do. And if the city of Davenport, or the, the Davenport Community School District wants to engage with the county, who does have counselors, mental health professionals, that's their charge. If they want to enter into agreements with the state, the state is responsible for providing this funding to the school districts. And if that's important, that's where we need to be getting after this. Um, but again, as long as, as long as the Davenport Community School District says, this is the direction we're going, this is the support we need, I will continue to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Jovian.
Thank you. As a product of the Catholic school system in, uh, Davenport, um, I think I could probably help find some retired nuns with a wooden ruler that could help set some people straight if this doesn't work. Um, I also echo Alderman Gripp's sentiments that, you know, I'm in favor of SROs. I'm also in favor of adding school-based mental health professionals. Um, but he pointed out very, very elegantly whose responsibility that is. And we need to keep lobbying, lobbying those institutions to, um, do that. Also making sure that Davenport Community School District does set those expectations, which we will help execute as, um, requested. Um, however, I also want to kind of point something out here. Um, Tom, I think we're getting a little lost in the weeds. This item is not about the SRO program in its entirety, correct? This is about school resource officer and a school liaison officer for Davenport West High School, correct? So if we pass this, that's going to go. If we didn't, there's still going to be school resource officers at Smart, Sudlow, Central, et cetera, et cetera, correct? Okay. So maybe some of the higher level conversations need to continue, but focusing back on this one particular agenda item and gathering data, as Alderwoman Lee suggested, which would be wonderful to have, um, I think those need to happen another time. Um, I will be supportive of, of this item when it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jovian. Uh, apologies to Alderwoman Dickman, who, we're having some audio difficulties. So City Administrator Spiegel's going to read her comments.
Yes, Alderwoman Dickman shared this and I did receive her consent to read this into the record on her behalf. I support discussing the potential scope of work for SROs. The community has valid concerns about the pros and cons of SROs and if those resources would be better spent elsewhere. There is a concern about kids being arrested for issues that could be taken care of without police involvement and that this contributes to the school-to-prison pipeline. If the way Davenport does SROs is different, it would be good to have an opportunity to talk about how it is different.
Thank you for reading that. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you have some comments?
Assuming everybody else is done, right? It's up to...
Alderwoman Lee.
For my own clarification, building on what Alderman Jovian said, the motion is authorizing the mayor to sign in general intergovernmental 28D agreements with the school district. So it's not just authorizing for West. It would authorize him for the future as well, yes?
Uh, no. If you look at the green sheet, the reason it's plural is because of the issue with the agreement from last year. So there's one from last year and then there's one for the upcoming two years. So...
Okay.
And it both deals with West, um, West High School, but that's why it's a plural.
So one ratification and one, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you asked if everyone had commented. I guess I'll add my comment and then I'll let you put a bow on it. Um, the, uh...
Your choice.
Okay. Well, the, the only thing I'll add, because, uh, everything has been stated really eloquently is I, I believe this matters on our agenda as a, as a matter of routine or calendar. Um, but nationally, we find ourselves at a, at a place of reflection and hopefully progress. So, um, I just wanted to observe the progress that we're making. Sometimes the, um, it comes with tension or, or adversarial positions. Um, but, um, in such a trying time that our nation's in and that our community's in, I think, uh, we deserve to recognize that we did the right thing, that we're pausing here and we are going to look harder at what we're doing and see if this is the way that we can do it better. Um, and the outcome remains to be seen. Um, but this is, this is how the process is supposed to work. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. So what I like, um, about this city is there's a lot of people that get involved and talk and, and give their thoughts and, uh, have their passion and have their concerns. And, and, uh, we listen and, um, both through the school board meeting that happened that, uh, Ms. Spiegel, I am, Chief Corsi participated in and many other members of the community. Um, there was one common theme, I think, um, and this is just my view, is that we do need to work on what the expectations, what the, the direction and what we want the SROs to do. I think it was a common understanding. So coming from that, I talked with a few folks and said, well, um, I'm not sure and I've been, I'll be starting my 18th year at Davenport Central. Um, I, I'm not sure that I could exactly say on, for every school, what exactly they do. I think it's a wonderful idea, uh, both from the school district and many members of the community, that we focus this program on what the school district wants us to do or what service they want us to provide. So, um, I'm happy, John, or anyone else, to, to add. I'm a piece of this. I kind of started the conversation, but I, I'm so happy that the school district wants to participate and, and other folks, if, um, uh, we'll look, community members, um, I'll look to have a couple on. Yes, thank you for that. I think we, that's a good idea. We're looking to have the meeting here shortly. Um, the beginning of this week, we're going to start this because it's important to do that. Um, I would ask this to support the position as, um, I've seen, uh, over the years, the work. Um, I think it is a fair conversation to discuss the people that are involved, that have the experience and have done the program, i.e. Officer Carter, Officer Sharif, Officer Love Day, Love Lady, et cetera. Um, I've seen their work. I've seen what this does. Um, yes, it needs to be focused and yes, it needs to have some, uh, parameters and, and bearings, but the school district's willing to talk with us and, and work with us on that and that, and then we bring it back to council, uh, for you guys to add, subtract or, or add your thoughts on it. And, and that's a continuing working relationship to build. And I appreciate everybody that's contacting and give their thoughts. But this is about West and it's the third largest high school in our state. Um, I am very concerned, um, with a lot of things, but seconds versus minutes is a concern. We are still, have you heard me talk, um, before COVID, I'm participating in Alice Drills with a lot of kids at a lot of schools. Um, and that's a real thing. Okay? I, again, focus, determine what the SRO specifically that person wants to do, working in coordination with our administration and our security folks and our teachers and everywhere to make sure our kids are safe. The SRO, the officer there is a piece of that, but I think it's a very important piece, um, to have that ability reaction. Um, and then anecdotal, okay? Everything we do is a human thing. Everything is an anecdotal thing. The relationships that are built, whether it's between us and maybe some of our relationships uh, become a little bit, uh, concerning because we have different passions and different understandings and different ways we look at things, but that's okay because we're humans. Um, this SRO discussion is a piece of a human discussion because there's a, there's people involved, whether we put a person in the, and the SROs back in the schools and they work with our kids. Bottom line, they're working with our kids. Bottom line, they're an influence on our kids. And in my experience, they're a wonderful influence on those kids. I've seen them in every high school. I've been doing this and going to every school, intermediates, not as many as the elementary, but I go to elementaries and we take kids in my program, when we go to the elementaries and read, the intermediate guys that we put in there, the SROs, as Love Lady, I agree. I mean, they do wonderful work and that relationship building and the kids, when you're at lunch, they just, they go to them and they, they hang around with them. Where else are you going to get that? The many programs that the, the, our police officers work with, Read Alouds, Real Men Read, Hundred Black Men Program, Read Across America, Quad City Youth, Youth Summits, et cetera, as Gary talked about, some of them, they talk about education. I've seen Officer Sharif and Officer giving classes to kids and, and the kids paying attention, quite frankly, because it's coming from someone that's in a uniform. I'm a teacher. Sometimes they listen to me, sometimes they don't. But when the officer walks in, most of them, why are you here? What are you doing? Oh, you're li... They're paying attention. When the security person comes in, they say, they're paying attention. Not everybody's perfect, but boy, do they, they pay attention on why that person is giving them information. And for the most part, I see that, that they learn, they, they ask questions. As Gary said, there's a thousand questions going when he talks to them. So does the SRO. It generates thousands of questions from kids that maybe I or others can't get them to talk about, but they do. Um, I think it's the, you know, there's many things. It's not perfect. I'm happy to work with everybody and happy to work with the school district and involve some more people, um, in this discussion. And, and, and we're committed to do it quickly and we're committed to taking, John, your comments and from the DEA and, and those questions and anybody else's and input those into our discussion. Happy to have that. In fact, we, we asked for it, right? So, um, I, I hope we support this continuance. At the same time, we, we're sincere and, and committed, both from the school district, I understand, talking with Dr. K and appreciate Mr. Scott, uh, coming and, and telling their side and, and I, Mr. Terrell, who has probably more experience at this than any of us, um, and, and John and all the other folks. Wonderful discussions. We'll input it, we'll take it and we'll make this a great thing for Davenport. And I'm so appreciative that everybody's doing this conversation to, to make, uh, the community better. So that's my, that's my thoughts and I, I look forward to, uh, discussion next week because we're not voting tonight. We're discussing. I hope we keep it on discussion, Mr. Condon. And, uh, I look forward to more discussion this next week, between now and Wednesday, then Wednesday. And we're having, we're hoping to having our first MOU meeting. We'll see. Uh, we're trying to get it before next Wednesday. So we already start some of that discussion and give you, I'll, I'll owe you that I give you feedback every time we meet. So thank you very much for everybody participating in this. I, and it's a great thing. Thank you, Mr. Condon, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. And certainly.
Hey, Tom. Tom, quick question. I apologize. Myself and the chair were just having a sidebar, um, in regards to this. And I think that it got started by the mayor with his last comment. So right now, once we do another, after we discuss number eight, but if we, to next week, we put this on the discussion agenda, it will still go forward. Is that a correct statement?
It'll be on next week, week's agenda for discussion. You'll have a vote next week. If it passes, it will go into effect as written.
Thank you.
I think my curiosity was for this to operate the way that we have discussed. Someone needs to introduce an amendment.
Yes. If you want to put in a condition that it's dependent upon the outcome of the mayor's ad hoc working group, you would need to amend it, but you could do that next week or you can do it tonight.
That's what I... Thank you for the clarification. Oh, we have one more item. Item number eight, motion authorizing payment to ByState Regional Commission for fiscal year 21, member dues in the amount of $51,338. Is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss this item? Anyone from council? Uh, Mr. Mayor?
I just want to add quickly, it's been a pleasure to work with the ByState and the ByState, um, commission and, and all the members that are on it. Um, there's a lot of things, but they focus on the federal monies that, for infrastructure and we're a big part of that. Quite frankly, we get a huge part of that. So I just, uh, just want to add some context that I think this is worthwhile spent, that we work with the ByState to, to get monies, especially federal, to, to do some of our projects and they're very, very good to work with. So thank you.
Thank you. And finally, on our agenda, we have listed, uh, purchases from 10,000 to 50,000. Uh, we don't read each of these individually, but they're there for the public's knowledge. Alderman Peacock, would you please set the agenda?
I move that number seven be placed on the consent agenda and all rest, as I word, number seven be placed on the discussion agenda. All the rest, one through six and eight be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed. That concludes finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon and Alderman, uh, Peacock. So we have, uh, next item is other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Um, is there first, a suspension of the rules? There's a motion. Second, Peacock, okay? Motion has been moved to second. We'll call Brian.
Gripp.
Yes. Doorman?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman? Okay? Jovian?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
And Lee? 10 yeses, Your Honor. Very good. So we have the suspension approval. So now we have a motion, uh, to approve the following noise variance request for an event date and time, which is, I'll read it, Uncle Lawrence fireworks, fireworks show after rodeo, Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds, 2815 West Locust, Saturday, August 8th, 2020, 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., fireworks, uh, over 50 DBA. Is there any public that would like to comment on this specific item?
Second.
Hearing and seeing none is, um...
Luther can...
Motion by Ambrose? Second by Peacock? Okay. Is there any discussion from any of my colleagues? Ms. Lee?
Recognizing how sensitive people are about fireworks, I'd like to thank Alderman Dunn for interviewing people in the area. And, um, knowing that it's only going to be 15 minutes, that makes me feel much more comfortable with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Alderwoman Lee? Anyone else? Seeing none, okay? Uh, Brian, please call the rule. Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman? Peacock?
Yes.
Jovian?
Yes.
And Lee? 10 yeses, Your Honor. Very good. That motion passes, they'll have fireworks at the rodeo. Okay, next item, is there any public with business? You'll have five minutes. Please state your name and/or word or address or location if it's not Davenport, sir, please.
I am a Davenport resident at 1929 Bell Avenue. My comments are in regards to something that Alderman Peacock mentioned about some literature that's been, uh, ending up, uh, with our schoolchildren. Uh, these are, um, fascist, racist, uh, leaflets that are being handed out. First off, I would like to tell you a, a little bit here, it's just a brief statement. Uh, the United States is currently undergoing a drastic increase in active racist and fascist hate groups. American Sharp, which is American Skinheads Against Racial Prejudice, is tirelessly working to expose and put an end to any and all groups that wish to do harm to people of any cultural background. Our mission as a national organization is to stand and fight the injustices committed by such groups as the alt-right, the KKK, and any other groups that align themselves in ideology or through complicit actions with the Nazi concept of white nationalism. We are fed up with their ill-informed madness. We choose not to sit idly by as they continue to attempt to destroy the very fabric of our great nation, a nation that is built on the backs of the working-class people of all races, religions and nationalities. So we would ask that people join us in the fight for our nation of the cancers that are racism, sexism, homophobia and fascism. As far as our community is concerned, this is not the first time this literature has been distributed in a schoolyard. It is public knowledge, and I should say on the record, that there was a man who I will not name, that was arrested at Davenport Central for distributing Nazi propaganda to schoolkids. When it came time for his arrest and to go to court, he was not held responsible for the materials that he was distributing, and these are hate materials, which I think should be defined as a hate crime. He was arrested because he was stupid enough to be carrying a gun on school grounds. He could have got three years in prison. The judge handed him a suspended sentence. That was the end of it. Not who he's working for, not the evils that can come from this type of literature and materials in our community. So I'm here to stand up for our community and offer support and let you know that we know where this is coming from. It's the National Alliance. It says it right on the propaganda, you can read it for yourself. And they're just one of many organizations that unfortunately are organized and well-funded. It's time that we stand again as a community and we stand nationally. And that's what I'm here to represent myself as. I want to thank you all for your time very much. Just one closing statement in regards to militarizing the police, you can count on me coming back. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, please.
My name is Cody Luth, I live in the 7th Ward. Got my master's degree in law enforcement and police management. I worked in juvenile justice at a great nonprofit called the Safer Foundation for a long time. Currently, though, I work as an investigator at the Civil Rights Commission. I've been there for five years. So before all the stuff with the commission happened, I was there. I am glad to hear about the new recruitment efforts to diversify the city's workforce. I hope they look at Western Illinois University where I went and got my master's degree, there's a great student body there, to choose candidates from, especially for law enforcement. It's big programs, it was the third largest law enforcement program in the country when I went there. Like the Alderwoman said earlier, it's more than training and recruiting improvements that are needed. Our director went to do an implicit bias training with police supervisors across the street. She was mocked and basically forced out by the audience. The chief came to our director at the time and told her that they are the ones who are discriminated against. So I hope that the new training efforts are listened to, but I just want to encourage mechanisms to make sure that it's working. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Teresa Zabludel and I was, I still had concerns about the fire and how it was handled at Breckenridge Apartments.
I'm sorry, ma'am, where's your address?
The incident, what kind of hurt at 4311, or 4323 North Division? And it's like they had hoses and fire trucks, mini fire trucks, hoses up the front side. I even told them where the, which apartment had the fire. How does it take 45 minutes to put a fire out? Why do they have young people? They shouldn't be running a fire truck. They can't get up the backside and they decided to put it out from the backside. This makes no sense. And here's part of the recording that somebody gave me. You can hear fire trucks going, nobody's up the hill. I don't know what kind of a rinky-dank circus this is, but there needs to be accountability and some people need to be fired. They don't put new people on a multi-fire truck and there's just no reason they couldn't have put the fire out. Because I personally told them up there when I was choking it down, trying to get my cats where the apartment was. You didn't even arrest the guy who set the fire, didn't warn anybody. So you guys really need to just use-
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I agree with her for the record, but, my name is Athena Gilbreath, I live in the 1st Ward. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak to you all and on behalf of many in the Davenport black community, I believe that we are all here because we want the same thing, which is a welcoming, prosperous and inclusive Davenport. But as I mentioned in my conversation with the mayor earlier this week, we are at a community that's at a standstill. We're a community that's not relevant to which the conditions the rest of the country are in and we're not living up to the potential that the city of Davenport actually has. As a matter of fact, we're fall, we're failing at the institutional level and the failure, this failure is affecting minorities in this community from River Drive to Research Parkway. I realize that this attitude negates the conversational purpose of moving in a direction that enhances the lives of black and brown people in Davenport, but to that I say, a community's attitude reflects its city's, city's leadership. We had a great example tonight with leadership encouraging more policing and even militarizing our police department. This is the type of flippant, unacknowledgable garbage that races eat for dinner. A week ago today, my child was walking home from her friend's house when the closer she got to our home, she noticed our neighbors in ourselves were the recipients of these white supremacist flyers. I brought them with me so you can actually see them. Here's one, I have three. My child is black. She was born in the same year that the Twin Towers were attacked and her life has been a constant barrage of witnessing racism and xenophobia. This domestic terrorism, these flyers were not something that we expected, but I can't say that I'm surprised because this is Davenport. When the Civil Rights Commission dared to have a virtual open community discussion on police brutality last week, that meeting was rebuked by yourselves and of course, the Police Association. Not only was this community conversation met with the most egregious display of white fragility I've ever seen from people who call themselves professional, but several oath-taking police officers as well as a previously employed police officer. It is concerning that these city employees racially attacking the director of the Civil Rights Commission thought that harassment would be the solution in handling the fragility that tears at the very soul of those who revere peace. Is our Civil Rights Commission director not city staff? What exactly has this council done to tamper down the racist rhetoric within our police department? I'm going to teeter on the edge of a dangerous statement and say nothing. I know this because the head of the Davenport Police Association, Mike Greenleaf, put out an actual press release blatantly harassing Director Lacy. I know this because Police Sergeant Fred Lepley publicly announced his displeasure for the community meeting by referring to it as crap on his Facebook page. You'll find many nuggets of concerning racist propaganda on Sergeant Lepley's page, and if by the end of this meeting, that page no longer exists, it's always a good rule of thumb to remember that things on the internet last forever. At least, that's what I tell my children. It's also evident that the Davenport Police and this council are not interested in any type of racial reconciliation based, based off of Leslie, Officer Leslie Deliri's discontented public statement on her Facebook page as well. You may remember this officer from her body cam video racially profiling a 12-year-old black boy earlier this year. And last but not least, former Davenport Police Officer Jake Pries, in his public statement, he justified his racism off of other Davenport Police Officers' racism towards Director Lacy. He went as far as lying-
Your Honor, Your Honor. I got it. That's out of order. You can't be outmaking accusations-
That's not an accusation, you can look it up.
Alderman, Athena, I'll let you talk, but please keep the direction to me. Right.
I am directing it to you.
Yeah, and so refrain from personal.
So I can't name these police officers who are employed by me as a taxpayer who are being racist?
Carry on, carry on.
I disagree with that, sir.
Stop. I got it. Thank you. Carry on, Athena.
And I didn't interrupt you when you said what the military-
Mr. Ambrose, I'll take care of it.
militarize our-
Please, Athena.
Please, Mr. Mayor. We all know that this is fairly rare, that our Davenport Police and Civil Rights Commission cross paths. So I don't know what the thing is that you have with Jake Pries, but he is obviously very much racist. Former Officer Pries continued his racism by claiming that when he was on the force, he had plugged many bullet holes on black bodies who were shot by other black bodies. And for those of you who have not gone through implicit bias training, which seems to be pretty much this entire council, that's perpetual racism right there. And that's some of the training that you guys need to go through before you guys ever seek public office once again.
Thank you.
My five minutes is not up, there is no way.
Please continue.
There is no way.
For a finish up.
As you can see here, ladies and gentlemen, there was no reconciling effort made in Davenport after the death of George Floyd. Just pure performative public presentation. And I think that, I think there are many in the community who are at a loss, wondering who actually the distributors are of the race, these racist flyers that myself, my kids and so many others have been burdened on the very steps of their home. After thinking about it for a week and witnessing our city's reaction to this hate crime and a reaction to a black city employee, my only hunch is that maybe it's the police department, maybe it's you-
Ms. Athena, come on. Please, thank you. That's not appropriate. Thank you.
I fully, you know what, these are not appropriate.
Of course they're not.
His comments are not appropriate.
Of course they're not.
Great, great, then I am here to talk to you about doing something because this-
Please finish.
needs to stop. I fully expect your anger at my words and accusations and believe me when I say I understand. In fact, welcome to being black. If this city's leadership isn't interested in racial reconciliation with the BIPOC community, then we'll continue to see these hateful effects on the city's stance in racism. I challenge-
Thank you, Ms. Gilbreath.
-this council to stop touting our great police and fire departments until we actually are great. And finally, I do want to note that if in the very near future, I end up dead or hurt, I am not suicidal.
Thank you.
I have no plans on leaving the area and if I'm gone, please continue to do the work of racial justice-
Thank you for your time.
-and please look after my children.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hi there, my name is AJ, I live on Grove Court and I'm in the 1st Ward. I don't know how I'm going to follow that up. There's a lot to unpack-
AJ. Name, AJ?
AJ Sharp.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me, there's a lot to unpack here, but I wanted to speak on, at least on behalf of my neighborhood over by Castlewood Apartments and Grove Court, about these flyers that have been going around. I first saw it happening in Rock Island and now it's in my ward and it's happening to my friends and the thought of a black child finding a flyer that is so blatantly racist breaks my heart. We have got to do something about this. I want Davenport to be the leader here because it's all around the Quad Cities and I want Davenport to stand up collectively and say, "You know what? Not here. We're not okay with this. The flyers need to stop. We need to improve our city and how black folks feel." Because right now, I can tell you, they don't feel like they belong because nothing is happening. We keep coming to these meetings and we keep saying, "Please, help us make a difference," but I, I'm not seeing it. I'm just not. And I, I want you to look inside yourselves and think of how you can be anti-racist every day. Not only when a flyer shows up, but every day, you need to stand up, look inside yourself, look at your place of work, look at your friends, look at your family and say, "How do we make this better for everybody? We're a welcoming community. I want everybody to feel welcome here, not just white people." And I want these flyers to be taken seriously and to be seen as the hate crime that they are because they are causing real damage and real trauma in black children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Hello again. Louder Rodriguez, Quad Cities DSA. Wanted to talk about-
Address, ma'am.
I live in Moline.
Thank you.
It doesn't much matter. I wanted to talk about the habitual felon criminals released into the community to terrorize our great neighborhood and how unfair our police department was. And it's unfair to the victims, unfair to the taxpayers, and the lack of action turns every taxpayer into a victim. I wanted to talk about a certain judge that released a certain felon from the National Alliance, who was discovered passing out the flyers at the high school with a loaded firearm on his person. This is a crime that can face up to five years in prison, but he was slapped on the wrist and released back into the community with a fine and probation. I'd like to know the disparity rates in felon charges between black people and white people in that instance, because that sure seemed like an outrage. And I ask, where was the outrage then? We have certain members who've been here over 20 years and it really shows that nothing's been done. I want to know why they aren't getting tough on hate crimes, where the city council was when that happened originally, why it takes people coming to the city council again to bring up the flyers again, like nobody knows where they're coming from, when the guy brags about it on their National Alliance message board, which you can find on Google. It's part of a larger picture of psychological warfare on people of color. I can't imagine waking up knowing that schooling, community funding, housing, hiring, policing and the judicial system are all stacked against you. And it's quantified by hard data both locally and nationwide. There's very little oversight when you neuter the Civil Rights Commission, there's very little oversight of the Davenport Police Department. Some of the things mentioned by Athena, I witnessed myself on the internet, as we, many of us are on. One of the comments that I had made was that I myself was stopped and harassed by six members of Davenport Police after a meeting much like this, that had gotten a little heated. Me and my autistic son, walking down the sidewalk, were stopped and harassed and treated poorly. The person that was mentioned to have committed racial profiling against a 13-year-old boy, same age as my son, was basically slapped on the wrist, put back into the, the, you know, pool. Nothing was done about it and in fact, they were protected by Davenport Police. Their name is obscured from all the news articles and we're supposed to know the, the, you know, not, acknowledge who that was when everybody knows who it was. And that same person commented on my comment to tell me, "I should have filed a FOIA request and I should have filed a report on that misconduct." For what? What oversight is there? There was a, a body camera footage of her harassing somebody else and got away with it. So I, I'm really just curious how I'm expected to, you know, get any sort of, of help on that one. And further, in the last census, it was discovered that Davenport is 83% white and 11% black, but according to the FBI, white people constitute 57% of the arrests and 42% is black. Again, 11% of the population is black, 42% of the arrests is black. The disparity is in black and white. You talk about data. The data's there. The FBI, the ACLU, this data has been done, studies have been done. Now it's time for action. I encourage the city of Davenport to be leaders on this and really grasp the problem, grasp the root of the problem, address it and make this a more equitable city. You want more tourist dollars, you want, you know, more people to come here and live here and thrive here. Take a look at what you're doing. Take a look at statements like, you know, to militarize the police, if the only tool that you have is a hammer, you're going to treat everything like it's a nail. So, you know, the more, the more things you have at your disposal to, you know, pepper spray or come into town with a tank or point gigantic weapons at people, you're going to use them, you're going to find an excuse to use them. And it's not fair to the people of Davenport, specifically black people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to take a personal, I'm probably going to do some people who have advised me not to do, but I'm going to say it. So the person that was caught at the school, it was at the school, it was at Brady Stadium and I'm the one that turned him in. That hasn't been said publicly, but I'm going to say it. And, and Mr. Holly gave me those flyers, Athena, you gave me those flyers. We all had, we've talked with our corporate counsel, we've talked with the administration, we've talked, we are actively searching to see who those are.